Welcome everyone to our September 16th, 2025 Midvale City Council Meeting. We have a light agenda tonight and we're starting a little bit early because we had no workshop, but we did have some food truck dinnertime amongst the council and staff and we had a great time. So I think we have, what, one more food truck Tuesday or two more? Two more. So come on out, two more weeks. Before we get started, I do want to recognize in the audience, we have some members from Unified Fire Authority. Thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate you. We know you will get a call at some point and head out, so I wanted to say thank you now. We'll start today as we normally do with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Rory, welcome back. I feel like you haven't been here on vacation and such. Welcome back. Will you call the role to see who's here?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Here.
Michael Ash.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
And Councilmember Billings is excused.
Okay, thank you so much. First up, we'll have a report from Chief K., Unified Fire Authority report, and a special presentation that I was told you guys are going to find very riveting and interesting.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. Yeah, I'd like to thank, this is your crew from 126 on B Shift, so thank them for coming up to the meeting today. So, yeah, so just to get started, month of August, we had 340 calls in Midvale. The most common fire call were two vehicle fires and two vegetation fires. So one of those vehicle fires was the arson of the UTA buses, and we do have a suspect in custody being charged with arson for that one. And then new medical calls, you know, most common sick person in vehicle crashes were at the top of the list. So pretty busy month for the crews with 340 calls. The next part is just a short presentation on lithium ion battery fire safety. So we're seeing an uptick of lithium ion battery fires across not only the country, not only the state, but the country. So we're doing a little outreach to do some information sharing about how to maintain safety of those. So I've got the clicker. So as we know, they're very common in our households. Most people have 20 to 60 lithium iron batteries throughout the house. So becoming more and more popular, super powerful batteries that power a lot of parts of our lives. The problem is understanding the battery hazards. So they burn hotter and faster, they're harder to extinguish, they ignite over and over, they produce toxic smoke and explosive gases. They're everywhere and they create unique hazards for us. So some warning signs and how to spot danger early, looking for odor, discoloration, excessive heat, deformation, leakage, and strange sounds. If you notice these things, try to set them aside safely and call 911. Kind of some best practices for these batteries, make sure you're using certified products, handle them with care, always stay alert, recycle them responsibly. Really, the big message is if you are finding them to be on fire or suspecting that they are a hazard, we want the citizens to get out fast and leave the extinguishment to us. Here's a couple of resources, how to get some more information, and the second one there is kind of some places to recycle. Bring up the, we created kind of a one pager for you here, so we'll make sure that we get this out to you and you guys can use it to spread the word to your community. It's kind of a one-page catch-all of the slide there. So that's kind of the end of the report for me. Any questions from councilor mayor?
So I appreciate this report a lot because I have a very real-world experience with this. Last summer, I was driving back from LA with my whole family, and somewhere between Barstow and Vegas, a semi truck carrying a truck full of these tipped over, caught on fire, and they couldn't put it out, and they couldn't get people out. So me and my wife and kids, we were stuck on the stretch of I-15 for like 12 hours. It was 110 degrees. Other people died in their cars from the heat, like three or four people, because it's such an intense heat. They couldn't get water. They tried to bring in like a bat hoe to, you know, try to bury it, and they finally just said, we're not going to open I-15 until this just burns out. And it's very dangerous.
Yeah, and they take an excessive amount of water to extinguish, and you know, kind of like the slide said, and they just keep reigniting. So really, the safety message is leave that to us and get out. So yeah, appreciate that.
Can we share this on our social media, Lord? I think this would be really helpful.
I think, I think we might have already, right? But yeah, but it's worth to do.
And I'm going to get Matt to update it one sheet. We found some errors in some of the QR codes, so we want to make sure we get the right QR code, and then we'll make sure he has the correct version to share, so.
I do know that I have a friend that had an electric mower, and I sell electric mowers, and he didn't buy it from me, but he bought it from somewhere. And he went and got a charger, his charger went bad or something, so went and got a charger off of Amazon or something that did not, was not the same manufacturer, and it started his house on fire.
Yeah, it's important that you use the right charger with the right battery and to make sure that you get those UL-listed batteries for your devices.
Is there, I get when it says smells. If you smell a weird smell around it, you should just assume that's the smell, but is there like a distinct smell around it or anything like that?
Just, you know how you kind of smell that burning electrical battery smell? That would be the smell you're looking for. Yep.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Next up, we have a brief update on some recent incidents from Chief April Morris from the Unified Police Department. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to update you. Last week on September 8th, we had a fatality vehicle accident on State Street, approximately 7600 South. Our major accident team, the car team, responded. What happened is a pedestrian was trying to cross State Street and was not paying attention and was not in a crosswalk. While the male was walking across, he was about mid-60s, didn't look both directions, was messing likely with his phone, and a Jeep coming southbound struck him, went into oncoming traffic, hit another car, rolled and took out a power pole. So it was an extensive effort by not just the assets at Midvale Precinct, but our major accident team responded and handled the investigations, as well as coordinating the efforts with Rocky Mountain Power to get that pole replaced. Unfortunately, the pedestrian passed away due to that accident. The other, there were two other adults that were injured. They were stable and likely to make a full recovery. So that was the incident with that accident. And then just wanted to update you, last weekend, our K-9 team, they actually competed in a competition that was held in Riverton. One of the K-9 officers, Officer Clark, his dog is named Pyro, he took first place in narcotics building search. Our other officer, Officer Ryan Smith, his canine is Drogo, took first place patrol area search, third place in tough dog, and fifth place in narcotics building search. And for Unified Police Department, we got the second place award for the agency narcotics search. So we're pretty proud of that effort. Any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And as someone who has participated in a dog bite demonstration, I can fully attest to the strength and just sheer power of those dogs. So congratulate them for us with a special treat of their choosing. Thank you. Next up, we have a proclamation. September is Suicide Prevention Month, and getting ahead of myself here, I'm sure some of us will talk about NER reports, but we had a car show on Saturday on Main Street, and most, if not all, of those proceeds are going to a suicide prevention charity here in Utah. So we thank the organizers of that event, and we do want to recognize September as Suicide Prevention Month. So we have Midvale City Proclamation, Suicide Prevention Month, whereas suicide is a leading cause of death in the United States and a serious public health issue that affects individuals, families, and communities across the nation, including here in Midvale. And whereas every life lost to suicide is one too many, and behind every statistic is a person, a friend, a family member, a neighbor, whose absence is deeply felt. And whereas the stigma surrounding mental health challenges often discourages individuals from seeking help, yet open dialogue, education, and community support can save lives. And whereas Suicide Prevention Month provides an opportunity to raise awareness, promote hope, and encourage connection by reminding all residents that help is available and healing is possible. And whereas Midvale City recognizes the importance of mental health and emotional well-being, and supports efforts by individuals, organizations, and professionals working to prevent suicide and provide resources to those in crisis. And whereas we encourage all residents to learn the warning signs of suicide, to check in on each other, and to foster a culture of compassion, understanding, and support. Now, therefore, we, the Mayor of Midvale City and City Council of Midvale City, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Month in Midvale City, and urge all residents to take part in activities and conversations that promote awareness, education, and healing. Adopted the 16th day of September 2025, signed by me, the Mayor, and the City Council members. So if you are in a position where you need to talk to someone, the 988 still exists for the time being, and we're hoping that it continues to exist. So thank you. Moving on to much happier news. We have our Harvest Days Committee in the audience tonight, and we certainly want to recognize the efforts that the committee put into another successful Harvest Day. So the, we have some certificates and some gift certificate to bambinos. It's the least we can do for all the work and hard effort you put into pulling off such a great event, as always. So if you want to, how do we want to do this? Do you want to have everyone come up? I'll read the certificate of appreciation if you want to come grab that, and then we want to take a picture out on the stairs, if that's okay. So I'll read this certificate as well. I should have had a glass of lemon water before I started. It's a lot of reading. No, this one's not too bad. So these certificates of appreciation. First one, this certificate is presented to Mike Williams, who I think came in, I saw him, in recognition of your valuable contributions to Midvale City Harvest Days Festival, and as chair this year and beyond. So we have, if you want to come up and grab that. Tanya Hoops, in recognition of your valuable contributions. Thank you, Tanya. Mackenzie Witt.
Just grabbing it.
And Rebecca Pipkins, who thinks that she's done with the Harvest Days Committee until I convince her otherwise. We'll talk later. Jeanette Helpman. Thank you, Jeanette, for all of your hard work. And Olivia Sessi. Thank you for all of your hard work as well. We appreciate it. I love seeing Olivia when I'm calling bingo. And last but not least, Cigar Pathar, back there? Okay. Thank you for your efforts as well. We hope to have everyone who was on the Harvest Days Committee this year, we would like to welcome you back if you would like to do it again next year. But I'll be reaching out in the next few days. I did talk to Mike Williams over the weekend. I happened to see him out and about, out in the wild, and he has agreed to be chair next year, and we're looking forward to bringing that back to the council for an official confirmation in probably two weeks. So if we can get a picture.
Can I say some words? Would be okay with that?
Absolutely.
All right. So over the last four years, we've been doing a new version of how we set up Harvest Days that's using the Harvest Days Committee. And then in addition to that, when we did that, we started also using Hoops Events, which Tanya and Mackenzie are a crucial part, have been a crucial part of the Harvest Days preparations and keeping things online during that day. We've also had different staff members who've been participating. And one of the things that's been really interesting is that every year, we've had a little bit of difference on who has been on the committee, and each year, Harvest Days has taken on a little bit of a different flavor based on who has been on that committee. As you recall, you know, for a bit, we had sumo wrestling that was part of it, and that's kind of an expression of that. And I think one of the things that's really been a part of this, which is very exciting to me, is just the efficiency with which this committee was able to put on this event this year. And, you know, there have been some mainstays that have been on this committee throughout. So Rebecca and Mike have been on here throughout all of this and through their last several years, and their ongoing participation in that has been extremely valuable in making sure that we put on a good show. And then, like I said, the new members have also been fantastic in coming up with new ideas and new ways for us to approach this event, which I think, again, has been better and better every year. I can't, again, I already said it, but I can't say enough about Hoops Events and a lot of the great ideas that have come from them that we will continue to use going forward that has also made this a fantastic event. And again, thank you, Tanya and Mackenzie. I really appreciate all that you've done for this group. So there, I think, are people who believe that this committee begins their work, you know, three months out or whatever. The reality is, is that we had a meeting a week ago, that was kind of a wrap-up from the previous meeting, and then it starts up again really kind of in earnest in October. And so this is something that requires a significant amount of time throughout the year to make sure that the show that everyone, you know, gets to experience for one day, the part that they, I mean, clearly, there's all the other days of the Harvest Days week, but for that one day of that event, it requires so much time from this group. And it is volunteers like this group that really help provide character to our community, that make amazing events, that make this community one that people want to live in. And I guess for probably the third time, I just can't thank all of you enough. So once again, thank you. And I look forward to working with some of you again, and I look forward to seeing those of you who feel like you've put in your time at the event in the future as just, as a resident, experiencing it from the less stressful side thing. So thank you again.
Okay, thank you for those words, and I think all of us up here echo that sentiment, and we thank all of you for your efforts. And if you want to take a picture, we'd do it outside on the steps. You guys cool with that? Okay. Okay, we can move on to the next item on the agenda. That's public comments. Anyone wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the city council at this point by stepping up to the microphone. You'll be given three minutes to comment. Is there anyone who'd like to give a public comment? Come on up.
Good evening. I'm back for the second week in a row, Brian Van Steenkist. This is about the pocket park, and I just wanted to express continued interest and see if there was any developments. One buyer was pending, and I believe they withdrew, so property's still available. And yeah, just expressing continued support for that idea and looking for an update if there's one available.
Thank you, Brian. So we were expecting some more folks from your neighborhood. We think that they might not have known that we started at six today instead of seven. So we do have an update. I think our city manager wanted to speak on that, but I was hoping more would show up so that we didn't have to do it multiple times. But did you have something you want to add?
I think I will follow him out when we're done with public comment. We'll talk in a moment.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone else who'd like to give public comment? Step on up to the microphone, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Luke Maynes. I'm the secretary of the Community Council, and I just wanted to give an update and let y'all know that next week, next Wednesday, so not tomorrow, but the following Wednesday, is our next general community council meeting. Anyone in the community is welcome. I want to express gratitude to the city for putting information about our meetings on the city website. So if people can find stuff there, we'll have our own website up soon. It's not quite ready, but hopefully before our It's not quite ready, but hopefully before our meeting next week. So, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Luke. Would anyone else like to give a public comment? Okay, seeing none. I will add to what Luke said. The last community council meeting, I think Heidi, or Councilmember Robinson, Michelash and I were there. I will say that I was very impressed at how well that meeting was run, and I look forward to joining more of them. It was very efficient, and there was a lot of good dialogue between community members. So, thank you for what you're doing. Next up, we have council reports. Councilmember Billings, of course, is excused. So we'll move on to Councilmember Paul Glover.
Yes. This last week, I've got a lot of complaints about the park and the homeless camping out there. So hopefully, we can keep doing, go through the park at night and make sure that they're not camping there. I told them we're doing what we can to accomplish that, so, and I assured them we'll continue to do that. So, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Glover. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Let's see. First, I just want to remind everybody that the candidate forum is going to be on the 30th here, so please come meet your candidates in that same light. It's a great time to get registered to vote, so please make sure, check your voting registration, make sure you're ready to go, because ballots are probably out in a couple of weeks here. Yeah, so check on that. And then I also wanted to thank UPD Chief for taking the time to kind of go through all of the budget and shared services and how all that works. It was very, very insightful, so I do appreciate you guys taking the time for that. And I also just wanted to say, even though they have all left, thank you to the Harvest Days Committee. I know exactly how much work they put into it, and I just want them to know that it is well-known around here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Bryant Brown?
I don't have anything this evening.
That's, wow. I'm at a loss for words.
I could fill the time.
Councilmember Denise Michelash?
I'll be short and sweet. Just want to say I went out to the auto show on Main Street on Saturday, which is exciting to see all the traffic and engagement with the communities. We'll be Friday volunteering to help clean up the Jordan River Trail if anyone else wants to come. Also, want to say thank you to the Harvest Festival, and want to also reiterate the importance of mental health care, and so I hope everyone checks out the resources that we post. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Michelash. For my report, I wanted to touch briefly on the events that occurred last Wednesday. There was an act of political violence in Utah. I did not want that to go unspoken of during this meeting. There's no place for political violence, gun violence, any type of violence when it comes to our public discourse. The following day was a remembrance of September 11th, 24 years since September 11 terrorist attacks. And the only thing that I took from those two things being so close together in time is, if we can remember the way that most of us felt on September 11, 2001, and how close of a community we were on that day, I hope we can get more to that than where we are currently. So that's all I want to say about those two things. Otherwise, okay, again, on to more happy news. Yesterday, I was able to represent Midvale City at the Immigration Naturalization Ceremony at the county. There were 89 new citizens who took the oath of citizenship, representing 36 different countries, which was pretty impressive, actually. There were some countries, I like to think I know some things, but there were some countries in Lakeview, never heard of that one. So it's pretty amazing that folks find their way to Utah from 36 different countries. There are about, I think the country most represented was Mexico, about 20 new residents or new citizens from Mexico. And I counted, based on the number of cheers when the city of Midvale was mentioned, about five people who were calling Midvale their permanent home. So we're excited to have them. One more quick update. After that was done yesterday, I went to spend six hours with UFA, Station 126, Platoon A, not the platoon that was here today. But I would recommend to any council member who hasn't done a ride-along with UFA to do it. It's very interesting. They feed you. That was good as well. But, you know, it was very, they were almost apologetic that the calls weren't very exciting. But, you know, someone like me, I'm just very fascinated by the process of how everything works from the beginning of the call to the end of the call. And, you know, I got a great appreciation of just how closely knit that platoon is and how those relationships absolutely impact our community in a positive manner. I was very impressed with the way that they work together and just how communal, like, you don't understand how, I mean, these people live together. They have breakfast, lunch, and dinner together, and they witness things that aren't great together, and they sit around and decompress together. And we certainly value what they do for our community. And again, I'd recommend any council member. I know Councilmember Brown is like, in his mind, a volunteer firefighter at this point. I think you'd really enjoy that process. Even, you know, the medical calls, we went on two medical calls, and again, they were apologetic that they weren't more exciting, but I couldn't have been more fascinated by the process. So recommend that for anyone and everyone. So thank you, Platoon A, who's not here, and Platoon B, who left a moment ago, and Platoon C. And I think I'm going to go over to Station 125 and do a ride-along with them as well. So, that's it for me. Moving on to city manager report. Sorry, I'm laughing, but the last time Matt was not here, then he reiterated exactly what I just said, so.
So did you say anything about the car show?
We did touch on the car show, but go for it. I'll just nudge you if you reiterate something.
Just, I'm reiterating, but just, the car show was a great event. It was a really good day. It was great people that were there, and it's always good to be able to have a great event, talk to the public, and see how it is benefiting the businesses and things on our streets when we're able to do that. And so for everyone who worked on putting that on or providing security or anything, thank you for your work on that. We have had a recurrence of a particular issue, which is, it'll never go away, but I'm just reminding folks that posting things on social media is not the same thing as informing us of issues. I say it every few months, it's a thing that sort of, there's an uptick of it. I'm going to talk about something that we did hear about on social media, which maybe is a negative, is a counter to what I'm saying, but really, if it's an emergency, call 911. If it's something that requires public works or another part of the city to do something about it, there is on our website, there is a place where you can send an emails to us. We have our numbers on there. Please feel free to give us a call. In addition to that, after-hours, one of the things that we have been seeing happening on a fairly regular basis is where people will call and they will say that our after-hours public works line that no one answered. There are, and then we find what happens is, is that actually people hang up before they can respond. So if you call the after-hour public works number, there will be three rings, then it'll go to a call service that will say that you've reached the call service and that you should leave a message. Those messages go directly to our on-call staff member, who will go out and deal with those. And so there have been occasions where someone will call, leave a message, then talk to a council member who will talk to me, and then I talk to Glenn, and then Glenn calls the person who's on-call to discover that they're already either onsite or on their way. And so use those methods. That is going to be the fastest way for us to respond to issues. And please, 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 if it's a law enforcement or issue, if it's not an emergency, there's a non-emergency number, and if it is emergency, 911. Okay. So that's the first or second thing, I guess. The next thing, sorry, while I was out, did you cover that one?
No, I did not.
Okay. And, sorry. I apologize, I had to deal with a couple of things out there. Did you want to cover that at all, the ones going up? Okay. So the next issue is that what we've been hearing from UPD and what we have been witnessing, and I think to some extent what Paul was commenting on, and I, sorry, I don't know if other people did too, is an uptick in individuals on particularly the 7200 South Corridor, but other parts of our city that we can refer to as transients. And one of the benefits that we have is we have an amazing, of course, our UPD, all of our precinct is amazing, but we also have a group, our Shelter Resource Officers, who, based on the name, obviously, work with the individuals who are at the shelter to help them out with things, but they also have a more expansive role dealing with transients, homelessness, camps, those kinds of things throughout our city. And that's funded through a state program. But one of the benefits of having this group with this very distinct purpose is not only are they highly trained, do they have an ability to build a rapport with people who have complicated circumstances, mental health issues and those kinds of things, which is extremely important for our community. But because they get to know these people on the corridor and other areas, they have the ability to sort of say, okay, we're seeing this person again, this is generally what their situation is, and they can go into it with that, and that helps resolve issues faster and that kind of thing. Over the last few months, though, what we have seen is an uptick of new people coming to Midvale that are transient homeless and those kinds of things. So this group has more individuals that they are working with on a regular basis. We're hearing some, well, I would say rumors, but we're hearing directly some of the reasons that they're coming into our community. We've seen this part of it, we've seen before, is that when enforcement in other communities becomes harsher, stiffer, then we, the individuals that are normally in those communities just displace to other communities. That's one of the things. There are some other reasons that we're hearing that we're seeing more of these individuals. So that, one, puts more stress on UPD. It puts more stress on our community, and it is a challenge that we're doing our best in order to address. In that vein, we, it is my intent, I'm a little bit behind schedule wanting to do it, but is to reach out to particularly some of the areas that are more affected by this trend, 7200 South Corridor and stuff, and have another meeting with the businesses that are along there. We did this a year ago. That kind of led into the grant program we had last year. We don't have those funds this year to do that, but we do want to meet with them to talk about ways that we could collaborate and see if we can come up with other solutions to help over the course of the next year in order to kind of deal with this issue. And of course, this is always in collaboration with our very talented and dedicated UPD staff. Thank you for being here this evening. Appreciate that. This also ties into one other issue that I sent an email about yesterday and that we put out some communication online yesterday about, which is the closure of our bathrooms. So normally, we close our bathrooms beginning in October for the season. And what we have seen is an increase of vandalism in the bathrooms in our main park. And, well, two issues. Vandalism, and when we talk about vandalism, I have erroneously described it as graffiti. And it should have been a more expansive description of that. It is people doing things that damage our plumbing and have required thousands of dollars and man-hours to fix over the course of the last year. It is putting extremely disgusting things, I don't necessarily want to describe, in places that our staff has to clean up on a daily basis. It is doing other kind of vandalism. It's leaving things that we don't want the public to have to deal with. And what our staff is saying is that there are times where that is more likely to occur, that is generally in the evening. We do not have park attendants who are keeping an eye on these facilities. That would not be generally a cost-effective thing for us to do. And so the decision that we've made is that between now and the end of September, we are going to be closing the bathrooms at 5:00. One other thing I forgot to mention is that oftentimes, when we have our singular staff member who closes those bathrooms going there in the evenings, when it is dark outside, they are oftentimes having to usher out people who are not there for the normal bathroom purposes, and that is a safety issue. Now, I could have provided more information online. There have been people who've been saying that this is not an efficient use of our money and to do this kind of stuff, we're providing these services. And I just want to clarify, it, this is the official, or efficient use of our money. There is a significant amount of staff time that is going into the cleaning and the repairing and all that kind of stuff that is associated with it. And the call that I made is that it'd be better for the community for us to have a better situation in those. One other thing I just want to comment on is that there's also been some people saying there should be porta-potties out there concerned about some of the events that are occurring out there. There actually are still porta-potties that are associated with these events. We've required them to have them as part of those events. And so we are not leaving these activities without the ability to use restrooms. So I just wanted to cover that really quick. And really, like I said, I should have said more about, had more information about that online. I thought all of this that I've been saying for the last 10 minutes would have been too much. So anyway, so I wanted to cover that. Then the next thing I wanted to cover is rats. We have discussed in here, and really, the mayor's done a lot of this research, I should have let him discuss this, but, so we have two different agreements dealing with animals in the city. We have our Animal Services Agreement, which deals with upstream animals and issues with domesticated animals largely, is what they're covering. And we also have an agreement with the county for wild animals. The name of that agreement is escaping me.
It's Urban Wildlife, and they deal with raccoons and skunks primarily, but that's basically what you would find in Midvale that Urban Wildlife would deal with.
So what the challenge is, is that none of these agreements, and this is also something that is also across other cities as well, is that rats are not included in these agreements to deal with. And so the city does not provide that service. However, we are looking at if there are options where we might be able to provide some assistance in that. But as of right now, rats are a pest issue that homeowners need to address on the run. We will be putting out more information on that online to help the residents understand that situation. For what it's worth, I also have rats at my house, and not in it, that I'm aware of. And I'm also having to work on trying to address that. But I just want to make sure that that's clear, and like I said, we'll be putting out more information to explain, give people options for what they can do in order to address rats if they're having them at their house.
Matt, I was under the impression if it's sort of serious enough or something, some kind of county function steps in, because, one, in my district, the county did get involved because it was like a visible rat's nest where they could see rats flowing around, where everyone else in the neighborhood had to treat it like sort of pest control and deal with it themselves.
So there are some very strange distinctions that they make. None of it is covered under our contract. So they may be able to provide some sort of assistance, but that's not something that is going to be, you know, just standardly included. So they probably would charge the homeowner some fee to do that. And there are places, if you catch a rat, they'll come take care of it, but they charge. And some folks were telling me, up to $200, $300, they'll come to remove a single rat from a trap. So I know that gets cost prohibitive if there's 30 of them. So that's what we were trying to figure out, if there were certain areas in the city that because of whatever reason, development, if that was causing more of a rat problem, if we were able to do something to help in those instances. But, you know, for the case like City Manager Doll's home in Murray, with his rat problem, you know, he'll have to take care of that himself, you know, barring any sort of help from Murray City Government. And if they have a program they use, please let us know. But, yeah, it's, it is weird, because you can call them, and sure, they'll come out and help, but it's just not the same as when you call for a stray cat. They'll come and pick it up, take it away, and not give you, not leave a bill behind.
I do have a program. It's called Amazon. I found what needed there. Anyway, we'll work, Councilman Brown, we'll... Anyway, we'll work, Councilmember Brown, we'll continue to work on some of the nuances of where that resource is available, and when we send out our information, we'll make sure that we're making that available. Following all those exciting things, Nate, did you want to talk about a mural? Yeah, why don't you do that? Yeah, why don't you come out?
Actually have two quick updates for the council, just another quick update on the Stag Street reconstruction, which is ongoing, they're on schedule, they've, you know, that includes stormwater, sewer, water, and then their whole complete reconstruction of all those roads back there. They finished the sewer portion of it, they're moving on to water, and it's on schedule. And so, and the people that are affected by that, the businesses and the homeowners, are being patient, we're continuing to contact with them a lot, so that's going as we planned. Anyways, quick update. The second update is on the, so if you haven't noticed, there's a new mural on the corner of Main Street and Center Street, on the Farmer and Chemist Building. That was actually, and that is a mural that the city, that the RDA has put together and put up, that was actually supposed to be part of the mural festival, but because of the, because of some medical issues that the artists had, they weren't able to come. At that time, we looked through a bunch of all the other artists to try to figure out what a good replacement might be, but we decided that there really wasn't, that that kind of was the right artist. Part of that reasoning is when the farmer and the chemist owners had shown us what their vision was, they showed us an artist that was a national artist, and that artist actually applied for the mural festival, so it was a perfect sort of match of, not only can we find someone that looks like that style of art, we actually got the actual artist that wants to come here and paint. So we ended up in the mural festival not having anything painted there, and didn't know what was going to happen, but then things have gotten better for her, so she was able to come out, so we were able to have her come out and paint that beautiful mural. Hopefully you'll go out and see it. It's just important to note that the farmer and the chemist business owners and also the building owner, you know, there was a big ad that was up on that wall for their business, and they were, they suggested taking that ad down and putting a new mural in place, and so we kind of thought, well, maybe it'll have something to do with their business, but they said, no, we don't want it to have anything to do with our business, we really want it to be a welcome to Main Street. And so that really is what it ended up being, is a welcome to Main Street. So that's all I wanted to say on that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Nate, and if you guys haven't seen it, it is a really incredible mural. Got to meet the artist today from Cleveland, Ohio. So, yeah, and has those lights above it, so it will be illuminated at night. Councilmember Brown, I know you'll be excited to hear that. Let's see, moving on, we did have, not to put you guys on the spot, but we had, we normally start at seven, so I don't know if you guys were here to make public comment about anything, certainly are able to do so. If you're here just visiting, that's perfect too, we'd love to have you, welcome. Okay, we'll move on. Consent agenda, we have one item tonight, and that is to consider the minutes of September 2nd, 2025, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I motionally approve the consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Nickolash?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Matt was scheduled to do the next action item, but--
Glenn, we could move on.
Counsel--
We could skip.
Yes.
We'll come back.
Mayor, it's Vanessa.
Oh.
Vanessa's going to be doing that step.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Okay, action item A, Consider Resolution Number 2025-R-53, Adopting the First Amendment to the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between Salt Lake County Health Department and Midvale City, and despite what your eyes may say, this is not Matt Doll, this is Vanessa. Welcome, Vanessa.
It's true, yes. I will not reiterate something else that you guys may have said. Let's see, so I'm Vanessa, hello, City Council, hello, Mayor. I am the Uplift Coordinator for Midvale City, your Community Coalition for Youth Violence Prevention. I am here to propose the First Amendment to our interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County Health Department and Midvale City. Little bit of background, our agreement started August 15th of 2023, and it is funded until 2027. The agreement has funded the development of Midvale Community Coalition, otherwise known as Uplift Midvale, under the Communities That Care Strategic Development Plan. Now, a little bit about Communities That Care, it is a nationally recognized and research-based prevention system designed to help communities reduce youth violence, risky behaviors, including mental health, delinquency, and of course, it entails stakeholders such as yourselves, city leaders, parents, law enforcement, health organizations, to all work together to improve the outcomes of our young people. A little bit about Uplift Midvale, here is our mission and vision, our vision entailing the community that empowers youth to create a supportive and resilient community. Our mission to collaborate education and advocacy for Uplift Midvale strives to build a foundation where every young person feels valued, heard, and empowered to lead a healthy and fulfilling life. Together, we work towards preventing the challenges that youth may face. By cultivating a culture of understanding, resilience, and support, our mission is to nurture the community where potential of every young individual is recognized and celebrated, and ensuring a brighter, more promising future for the generations to come. This is your coalition that we have here in Midvale City, and I'm very proud of the work that we've done so far. As far as the First Amendment, which I'm hoping to pass and approve, it's because CDC has awarded us $10,000 to be awarded for year four, otherwise known as fiscal year 26, to our payment schedule, and that will revisit the budget in totality, that will take us to 2027 of $1,135,000. The budget will include funding for coalition operations initiatives, including me, and also a epidemiologist over at Salt Lake County. So before we move forward, do we have any questions in regards to that?
Any questions for Vanessa? Thank you, Vanessa.
Yeah.
There is a motion for the council to consider?
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2025-R-53, adopting the First Amendment to the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between Salt Lake County Health Department and Midvale City.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, will you call the yeas and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Bickelash.
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Vanessa.
Thanks.
Moving on to the second action item of the day, Consider Resolution Number 2025-R-54, adopting the 2025 Salt Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And here to remind us what this is, as our emergency municipal planner, Brian Buckell, welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
How is your curry versed?
How's my what?
Your curry versed, did you have that?
Honestly?
Okay.
I saw somebody have the oxtail, and I have regrets, I wish I tried the oxtail. I'm a big fan, I cook it every month for when I make my own faux sauce. All right, so, let me see. Perfect. Okay, thank you for the intro, Mayor. As you guys know, during our last workshop, we had a discussion about the Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'm just going to quickly do just a few slides, just to re-jolt everybody's memory and also for people in the room that weren't able to hear it. So the Midvale Hazard Mitigation Annex was developed for a larger part of the countywide Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. This plan is intended to update our 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan, it'll carry us till 2030, it has a five-year shelf life. It consists of a comprehensive base plan, which I've mentioned, that's like volume one you might see, that's 468 pages, I know I said last time, when you're looking at that, consider it like an encyclopedia, you know, you don't read a whole encyclopedia through and through when you have a source or a question or query, one of your community members or somebody in research is asking, what is your hazards, what is, you know, where does that data come from, then you can source into that. In addition to that, there's an annex that is city-specific, that's the Midvale specific annex, I think that's around 68 pages, a little bit more digestible, really dives into the local hazards, this is, it gathers any kind of data that was collected by both stakeholder review here in the city, as well as a public survey that went out, so the public were able to have a chance to weigh in and provide us what they would consider a perceived risk, while we still took actual data from historic risk and then put those together into a risk index. And the overall, just bottom line upfront, it just provides a framework for reducing hazard mitigation, or reducing disaster impacts, it protects lives and properties and the environment, and it supports the city's long-term strategy and emergency preparedness and resilience. So we had our workshop, and if, you know, some of the things we key out in that workshop is that we outlined hazards and risk identifications, we had public, we explained how there was public outreach surveys and materials allowing the public to be able to weigh in on that, on that plan, and then that we had local stakeholder review, I know that I was with the city manager for many days, we went page by page, really trying to gather as much data as we can. And we also took from the 2019 Hazard Mitigation Plan, so nothing was lost, if anything, there was only additions to it. We added five more hazards, and those hazards were all weather-related. And then also, we have just mentioned that this is a guidance in priority of action items and mitigation efforts, there's several cell sheets in there that really just, real top line explains what the hazard is, who might be the lead or supporting agency, be it county OES or county public health, it outlines those specific things that you can weigh in on, and then also the cost is at high, low, and what is the risk ratio, and then also like the overall actions that could be taken. Just note that, you know, you'll look at the actions, and I mentioned this last time, that if there is, if some of these actions are kind of costly, we always can do public information, we could always provide public information to mitigate hazards, and so we obviously have a lot of pamphlets out there when people are walking out the door, we just want to make sure that no matter what, we can always do something to mitigate. And obviously, we touch upon that we identify vulnerabilities in the population, this is obviously elderly, children, low income, and also what we've been talking about, just individuals experiencing homelessness. Does not go into rats, though, sorry, we'll have to update that next time, though, I think I know the source, it's Matt's house. Okay, so council action, so by adopting the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, including the Midvale Annex, you maintain eligibility for federal hazard mitigation. That's the main reason why every city is adopting it. If you want to be awarded certain grants from FEMA, and there's even posted disaster grants, and there's also, I know this for a fact from when I was on federal declarations and on response teams in California, working with FEMA, that they do, before they add in certain individual assistance or public assistance recovery measures in terms of cost sharing, they do want, they often ask a question, hey, does this county have a, or city jurisdiction have a multi, or a hazard mitigation plan? Just kind of the way of showing that they know that we're doing our work before they provide that cost that we can recover. It also integrates hazard mitigation into future development, such as land use and capital improvement planning, and it advances community safety and resilience over the next five years. There is 26 participating jurisdictions as well, just wanted to note on that, and the county adopted the plan, it went through state and federal review and approval, and it was adopted by the county in July. Now we're reaching out to jurisdictions to see if they would like to move to that motion. I'm willing to take any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, any questions?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you for putting that together, we appreciate it. This is an action item, so there is a motion for the council to consider.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-R-54, adopting, sorry, adopting the 2025 Salt Lake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, multiple seconds. Rory, will you call the yeas and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Robinson?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Nickolash?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on to discussion items, we have one discussion item tonight, and that is to discuss a proposed tax increase for the South Salt Lake Valley Mosquito Abatement District. And as he makes his way down, Councilmember Paul Glover is going to lead us in this discussion. Paul, mosquito man.
Mosquitoes and taxes is favorite things to talk about.
Exactly. I don't like either one of them.
It's good to be with you tonight. The reason I'm doing this is because each city has to, the council needs to know what's happening, and I actually have to have them report the minutes to mosquito districts, so that's why we're doing this. I was going to say, mosquitoes don't like me either, because I don't get many bites, but if I'm with my wife, they love her. So anyhow, the reason we're doing this is because, and it won't be the tax this year, it's going to be the following year, so it'll be 2027, or '26, I guess it would be, when you'd actually pay these taxes if it's passed. The mosquito abatement district hasn't had, I think it was 2002 that they actually increased the property tax, and then they build a new building, and several years later, I think it was 2017 or so, they actually paid off the building and they decreased their property taxes. And they've done this, I think, up until about 2012 was the last change. And so with everything that's happening, they need a little bit more money. They're trying to raise, with the property tax, $320,000. And so, as the current property tax raises, $1,225,000, and that's throughout all those cities in the South Valley, so it's a lot of people. I'll just tell you what they're doing, so they're raising, they want to raise $160,000 to sustain the current services and to integrate back the Black Fly Program, which we did away with for a while because we didn't have enough money to do it, and maintain financial health of the district. They would like to do $100,000 to expand a drone, to be able to use drones, to be able to do a lot of the stuff that we have individuals doing right now, and update the data systems and implement targeted control measures. And then 600,000 of that would be to meet future capital needs, to modernize the fleet and equipment and expand laboratory testing. So what this amounts to is on the 12th, or December 8th this year, they'll have a truth in taxation, and that'll be at six o'clock at the district office, so we want all of our people in Midvale to know that they're welcome to attend that and voice their opinion. Obviously, I'm going to be the one that votes on that, so if you have anything that you want to tell me, you can do it now, or we can do it, you can talk to me later. But it amounts to, for a $600,000 house, it amounts to 77, 77 cents a year, is what the increase would be. And for a business of $600,000, it'd be $140 a year more. Do you have any questions? They run a pretty good tight ship out there, they really do, for keeping the mosquitoes out. Now, there are people that have talked to me, they don't care if they get bit or not, so, but if they get West Nile, they might not like that, and that has been increasing every year. Any questions?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glover, for your service on the board as well, we appreciate it. It'd be nice if we could raise taxes, 77 cents, and raise, what, a million?
About $320,000.
Oh, $320,000 still, that's, that must be nice. So we do have a closed session tonight, my recommendation is going to be to temporarily recess our council meeting and go into our redevelopment agency meeting, get those items cleared up, and then come back into the closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, multiple seconds again. Rory, does this require a roll call? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are officially in the redevelopment agency meeting of Midvale City, welcome, everyone, September 16th, 2025. We will begin with a roll call. Rory, will you see who's still here?
Yes, Board Member Glover.
Here.
Nickolash?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
And Robinson?
Here.
Okay, and Board Member Billings is excused tonight?
Oh, thank you.
Yep, that's okay. Public comments, if there's anyone who wish, wishes to get public comment at this time, Luke, step right up, state your name for the record if you would like to.
I don't think you need to hear me again.
Okay. Seeing no one else approaching the microphone-- Seeing no one else approaching the microphone, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda tonight to consider the minutes of September 2nd, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I motionally approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and just one second this time. We're good. Rory, will you call the yeas and nays?
Yes, Board Member Brown.
Yes.
Mikulaj? Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
And Robinson?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on to our single discussion item tonight, discussion regarding the term sheet for an adaptive reuse loan agreement between the redevelopment agency in Midvale City and 7511 Main Street LLC, AKA Honeysuckle, right?
Yes.
Yes, Honeysuckle.
Yeah. Good evening, board and chair. Yes, this is the, for the property that Honeysuckle has a lease agreement with. So hopping right into it, the plans for the funds are to reconstruct the existing building to make it up to the standards of building code and safety, which it is not currently able to be used as it is. The loan terms are $250,000, $250,000, seven years with a 0% interest rate. And we've got a picture of the house up there. It's just across the street from City Hall, so we've all been pretty familiar with it. Be really exciting to get that going so that Honeysuckle can move in. They've got their sign put up on the fence to, you know, get people excited about it, so that's pretty great. The garage is planning to, you know, they're planning to have that stay there. And then just the structural upgrades to the house and reconstructing the house as a residential building, just to keep that variety on Main Street, which was voted highly on the Main Street survey by the community. As part of the loan terms, the borrower agrees to submit all the receipts and everything in case we need to verify the use of the loan funds. However, we have, you know, supported projects of Jeff Beck on the street before, and they're, they've been very successful for the street, drawing lots of people in. And then the collateral, the loan ratio is 100%, so everything is covered.
So I would say he has a phenomenal job on the street. Totally appreciate it.
Yes.
I think for everyone's safety, we should still do the receipt thing.
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said he could. I want to make sure he should.
We, we can request them. It's not something that's necessarily like a requirement, so if that is-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes. We can request them whenever we want. Yes.
It sounded slightly different to me. Now I hear what you're saying.
Yes. So whenever, you know, we feel that we need to check up on anything, we can do that at any time with the agreement. So, and then, yes, with the economic impact is, you know, we, we went over this a little bit with the Honeysuckle Coffee Company, but it's really going to activate the space with having both the barbecue at night in the garage as long, as well as the bakery, which will, you know, activate during the morning and at night. And then the courtyard, once that gets going in the warm weather, there'll be music and everything like that, kind of how Bambino has it, but more like a backyard, which is pretty cool. Public amenities, the music and the courtyard, the outdoor dining space that there's going to be. And then also, it's not really been a great sight on Main Street to have, you know, that, the house there. And for a while there, it was a little bit sad, so it's going to be great to have something that, you know, passersby can be walking by the city, going to the plazas and everything. And then there's this beautiful residential building being used for a restaurant, which is pretty cool. For the adaptive reuse, as I stated, the building is just not safe as it is. So for building protocols and everything like that, they're going to have to reconstruct, but it will be in a residential house. And then historic preservation, it's got the current layout, and the structures will maintain, you know, the same floor plan, so it'll be a single story, everything like that. And the new facade and signage will be really welcoming, being at the beginning of the street when people come in off of Holden Street. This is the proposed floor plan, so they've got kind of everything set up there. It's got, you know, the cafe where the main house is, with the entrance and everything staying right off of Main Street. And then we discussed possibly having a separate entrance into the courtyard so that you can walk straight on back to the food window, which will be where they most likely are serving the barbecue and the bakery goods. So it's kind of nice. You can just go through the courtyard and not have to go through the coffee shop if you're just looking for bakery goods and whatnot. And then the applicant is here. If you guys have any questions for them or for me?
So I just want to say, I think this is awesome. And I think, you know, as a council, not, so it's not really directed towards the applicant at the moment, but Midvale is pretty built out, right? And we want to maintain a lot of the look and feel for a lot of the area, right? That being said, I think, I'm very excited for this project because I think it's going to be very successful. And I want us to look outward afterwards for other areas of the city where adaptive reuse could really benefit areas. You know, people always talk about, you know, food deserts in like District 4, right? There's, there's not really a place to put commercial food places, right? So I just, you know, I want everyone to keep an open mind that I really think this is going to work really well. I think the residents buy it at first. I mean, like, they'll like it. The rest of Midvale will love it, and I've liked to continue the conversation of adaptive reuse in other areas. That's just sort of my two cents. So I appreciate the work. I like it so much that I want to, you know, once we show this works, kind of keep going, you know? So that's just my thoughts.
I think one good example of that is the Zion Bank Building that's by your house, like Grant and Center Street. I mean, that would be a perfect location to do something very similar to this. Timing probably won't work out on that, but I think that's a great idea.
I'm really excited to see this add to the activation on this side of Main Street as well. We've kind of got the food truck plaza, and then there's kind of a little bit of a gap. And I'm hoping this will start to kind of fill the holes on its way up, so I'm really excited about this project as well.
Awesome. Yeah, I think the variety as well, not having any like barbecue or anything super. Well, you know, we have R and R, but it'll be a little bit smaller and a little bit more specialized, so it'll be a really cool addition restaurant-wise to have in this space, so.
I do have one question. You might not be able to answer it, but when we're talking about like the mass smoking of meats.
Delicious.
Yes.
Yeah, amazing.
But also, how is that, how does like the outdoor ventilation of that work? Are we going to get like complaints from the neighbors that there's like a plume of meat smoke flowing through the avenues? I don't know. People would complain. They might complain that's making them hungry, but-
It smells delicious.
Blow fans other way. No, I'm not sure. Jeff, do you have any plant mitigation for that? See if maybe the applicant has that right.
I think that-
State your name for the record.
Jeff Beck, the applicant.
Welcome, Jeff.
And I think we'll adhere to whatever building code requires, but, you know, the hope is people smell and they come, so.
Yeah. Well, I know, and, but there's always someone who does not or may not appreciate having that wafting through the neighborhood, so. We appreciate everything that you're doing. I, I've heard people, you know, very excited. I tell them about, oh yeah, Honeysuckle is going to have a second look, and they're already excited about that. And then I tell them about the Carolina barbecue, and then I tell them, oh yeah, and the people are from the Carolinas. So this is going to be incredible. Can't wait.
What's like cross the fingers open date?
I mean, we're hoping next summer.
Because I remember the Bambino took a little bit of time.
I mean, I'm telling you, next summer it'll probably, you know, pass that. We're hoping, I mean, they want to be open. This is kind of a long time coming. And we're, we're hoping we'd be able to reuse the house, but it's sitting on stacked rocks, so.
Right.
That might take a little time, but they, I mean, their, their understanding and ours is that we want to get going, so.
And the vinyl fence coming down?
That's a, that's a historic feature of the property. I'm just kidding.
I'm so excited. If you need me to like hit stuff with a hammer, let me know.
You know, we refer to it as the crack house, so I don't, I mean, you know, we're excited to be going on, changing that.
Historically keeping that name?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions for Aubrey or Jeff?
Thank you.
And I, I mean, I say this, but I, this body helps this kind of stuff happen. And I just want to say thank you because we're seeing the success that this program brings and, and we're getting, you know, there's a lot of momentum building, so thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. This is a discussion item, right? Not no action tonight?
Yes, next time.
Next time you'll bring it back to us, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We do not have a closed session in the RDA meeting, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? We are adjourned from RDA and we have magically re-entered our city council meeting. Moving to the last item on the agenda for the city council meeting, we have a closed session, and that will be to discuss item C, strategy session, to discuss the purchase exchange or lease of real property. Is there a motion to enter a closed session for that reason?
Motion to enter a closed session.
Second. For that purpose, the purchase exchange.
For the purpose of, the purpose of our exchange of physical property.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Rory, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yep, here.
Mikulaj?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
It was a, aye.
Aye. They said here, and I was like, I forgot it's an aye.
Glover?
Aye.
But that was a good one.
I was thinking about it.
So can we do Councilmember Brown and Mikulaj again? Because you said here.
And then don't, don't say anything for a minute.
Okay, Brown?
Yes.
Mikulaj?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think technically here is a no.